This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda items.
Madam Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Do the motion from Councilman Mollatt is second from Councilman Shriver. Will the clerk please call roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Item two, request your comments in the public. Come on up. No, you're good.
I gotta make another note.
Did we have anyone else? I think you're all we've got. So you'll probably remember to state your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Rhonda Smiley, 10526 Richland Avenue. I have three issues tonight. I kind of like to keep it to three. First is Evergy. The question is, do we have any control over their current lines, whether they're transmission lines or distribution lines that are like six to 10 feet off the ground or fully embedded in the tree lines? I mean, those things are hazards that we are going to suffer from eventually at some point, and they're going about making all these other new lines. It would seem like they have a maintenance duty. Plus, I would mention that the new Mattel development has planned for big rig RV park. You can't get under most of these lines around here. So if anybody's going to try to go up 110 or take any of our other routes to that development, we're going to have to have them raising those up. And if you're going to talk to them about something, that would be important to me. Plus, where are they? They're taking transmission lines across I-435. They blocked traffic for that the other day, and they put new transmission lines all the way up 98th Street. So where are they going to come across for those additional things? I think it's something that we really have to be aware of because we know that they do things that might impact us greatly. Second is, I'm wondering if there's a report on the status of the bond litigation, the compass litigation, all that stuff. You can read a little bit about it online, but not so much. And I'd like to know what the city is thinking about it, where we are, because it seems like until that's all resolved, we're stymied. And I'd like to know if we've done any kind of a root cause analysis, because if you read the pleadings, we just got defrauded at every step of the way. And I'm wondering, who was in charge of that? Who was not paying attention? Or if they were, how much were they really defrauded? And what kind of remedial actions we've taken to resolve our confidence or restore our confidence in the next time we issue bonds? Because these guys were, they're just frauding everywhere. Third thing is, I'm wondering if anybody is assigned in the city, the city council or whatever, to monitor the Bonner Springs budgets and their development plans with special respect for Mattel and unified government plans with their budgets? Because when I read it, there's a whole lot going on that seems like it's all directed to KCK and not so much Bonner and Edwardsville. And I just didn't know who goes to those meetings or monitors their budgets or what kind of input we have besides Chuck Steigs. And so that's my question.
Thank you. And just to remind everyone, since we can't respond right now, stick around. Sometimes we're able to respond at the end of the meeting or give some staff feedbacks. Did we have anyone else for public comments this evening? Nope? Okay. Moving on to item number three, your presentation from Matthew Willard, the Wyandotte County Appraiser.
Well, thank everybody for the invite to come and visit tonight. We did one of these last year. This is going to be real similar to that. I do appreciate the opportunity to come and visit. I think last year was useful. This year, I again spoke with most of the taxing jurisdictions. We also did nine public meetings, which is about double what I did last year. But I do appreciate the opportunity to come and speak and do some of this outreach type stuff.
I'm sure you're into it.
There it is. Thank you. We got that to work. Does that need a bit?
There you go.
Ah. I don't know how that happened.
No, that needs to be in there.
That needs to be in there. Okay, mine just clicked for me?
All right. So by way of introduction, I am Matt Willard, the county appraiser for Wyandotte County. Been with Wyandotte County about 18 years. Did fee appraisals for quite a while before that. I've been three years as county appraiser. Our total staff contain, consists of 27 employees, responsible for 67,500 real estate parcels divided 62,000 residential. That's going to include residential as well as vacant ground, vacant residential ground. Our commercial division is about 5,500 parcels, again, between vacant commercial ground and improved commercial properties. We've also got a personal property and admin division responsible for about 7,500 accounts. Manufactured homes is a big portion of that, boats, trailers, anything that you pay personal property tax on is going to be interacted with for that part of the department. Jaye Robbins, a lot of times joins these. She's a deputy county appraiser. Been with the county about 20 years, three years as deputy. Anytime we're talking about property valuation, there's something that I like to point out before we even get started. Appraisers don't create value. That is done by market participants and their decisions in the marketplace, what they choose to buy and sell property for. As county appraiser, I've got the legal responsibility to analyze those transactions and appraise property based upon what's happening in the marketplace. And it's also important to note that we are an independent office within the UG. Evaluations are set prior to the budget process and without any outside influence. We hear especially this time of year, oh, UG's broke, told you to boost values. And that's never happened. And if it did, you'd hear about it because I'd be having a fit, anybody would listen. And independence is important. It's set up in statute, it's set up in constitution that way for a reason, and I take that very seriously. So the, that's all right. So what's the purpose of the appraisal process? Again, we're set out to appraise all real property at fair market value, and it allows for an equitable distribution of the tax burden. Equitable in this case means that everybody is paying at the same percentage of market value. I got some statistics coming up a little bit later to explain that. But that is exactly what it is. Our target is 100% of market value. Want to make sure that everybody's paying taxes based on as close to 100% as we can consistently. That valuation is market-based. Valuation and budget are two separate processes. Residential parcels are assessed at 11.5% of that market value. Commercial properties are assessed at 25%, and those rates are set in the Constitution State of Kansas. And I go a little ahead of myself on the slides. Another important thing to note is that oversight is conducted both on how we do our work, the procedure, as well as the statistics. A target appraisal ratio is 100%. Every piece of property at 100% of market value. That's not practical. We're not that good. We're not fortune tellers because we're judged that January 1st value versus what happens the rest of that calendar year. So an acceptable range is anywhere between 90 and 110% at the median. And for our compliance purposes, typically, and this has gone back five years, we've been at about 90% of market value for residential properties. That's to say, at the median, that's going to be some are higher, some are lower, but at the median, we're at a 90% ratio or about 10% below market value based on the properties that sell. Just a brief review of the taxation process. Again, we value as of January 1st every given year. That can lead to some strange things happening. If a house is there January 1, burns down January 2, the taxes, because of that effective date, are due and paying for what was there as of January 1st, the house before it burned. The other way, if a house is just a foundation January 1, and you're building on it, if you finish it in August or November, you're still going to pay based on how it's set January 1st. So we do analysis year-round, but we mail our notices of value March 1 for all real estate.
The last four, five years, we've made a lot of that. I had to, I missed a submission from the state. This year, I've been at 101, that's a field deadline in terms of, March 10th, in the past. I would say, yes, those allow, uh, to do the debates and protest, but not, or other than that. So when you look at, take my protest, um, most of the tax law depends on these different processes, and they're all, the taxpayer, or the, that people feel that as long as there's another opportunity. From there, mostly Karen grabbed up a layer to make their team, their client, to be notified. We're certified values, we can't be caught. Uh, let's see if I have, it's already gone, what kind of, that's, you're, you've got those, that's, based on, my government, that's, because the county, the city, the real estate, that's, that's, we're, 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 all those, we're, 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 so while we've talked about that, last year, I meant, another common question we get, several things to keep in mind there, the real estate market, even though things have slowed down as far as the rate of appreciation, properties, year over year, still continue to sell for more than they did prior year, and stuff like that. The real estate, it's, every six years, every piece of real estate, I say at least, we've got, and that's an addition, that's, 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 also trying to help buyers and sellers on those, and that is the information that's available to allow certain values, uh, to adjust the property's, to want there to be as accurate and permanent as we can. About that complaint for housing market, I'd say 2024, this is as of January 1st, because that's our effective date. And sales price growth, we've been seeing, that has been causing big value increases. It's all down, down wide, we were 20% in 2022, 2023, 23, 24, that's 17%. So that's slowed down, but it does continue. Part of that is Wyandotte County is an affordable community within a fill of the backdrop on a national scale. It still makes sense to buy, if you can buy something to buy. Monthly revenue decrease, in some cases faster, than what property values have. So makes sense there. Looking forward to 2025, short of something unforeseeable or something just catastrophic happening, I anticipate that price appreciation will continue throughout 2024 and 2025, again, at a much slower pace. Uh, mortgage rates, they really took a spike, they're part 20.3, fall to spring. That caused transactions to about a month and a half until people priced that in buying things, and it picked right back up. So I think where we're at, with interest rates in that six and a half to seven, seven and a half percent range, that's where they ran traditionally, one of that 25. The last five, we've had an aberration. So I think people are, are used to those rates. I don't think it's had any impact, maybe, uh, of, 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 so it's not down, it's, it's like they anticipated. And I think there was due to a very restricted supply, because of the, 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 Wyandotte County overall, from apartment MLS, realtors, site assistance, they were basically used, transacting property. Looking from December 22 to December 23, again, it's a, 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 for Wyandotte County overall, they have sales rates increased from 75% to 17% in 2423. The median measure, again, that's half, over, half a hundred, that same data set increased 27.5. The days on market, the market settlement increased by 22%. Last five days, it's still around a month, it's around Thursday, month. It hasn't been lower, typically over 60 days, around balance mark, still there, somewhere around. The percentage of list price that the seller received increased to 96.8%. In that case, there are some discounts that are apparent from that rate of list price, but there's still a lot of properties that have competition where their list price gets at, people are dead against each other, and it actually closes more, thousands. Again, that's not as common as it was, but it's still occurring. Earlier, about, against, in, 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 or, 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 this slide is to illustrate that. Please recommend data for this one. Again, this does have December 23. Using the RFP data because they aggregate nationwide, specifically have county data around here. We don't get information necessarily from Missouri counties, and to keep the comparison fair, we use that data for everything. Our median single-family sale price, these actual sales, according to sales, they're using, to verify, that was actually up 27% year over year. Really, Texas County, Missouri, Kansas City, Missouri, we're still slightly under that hedge, but still under it. The remaining pair of the surrounding counties, specifically Wisconsin County, their median sales price increased much more slightly, but it did get a dozen, or around, over county. Again, some big increases there, still higher, that county across, we're still very, very decent people. Something I would like to highlight, interesting, about this slide, if we look, Johnson County's , how he's been as far as that rate then decrease, much, much slower. And I do attribute that to the fact that those higher mortgage rates are having a bigger impact on the higher-priced properties that just gets where it is less affordable compared to lower-priced property. This slide, we've made it year over year. If we go back to 2020, 2019 even, the typical house in Wyandotte County sold between $100 and $150,000. That was where most of them sold, for lack of a better term. By the time we get to 2023, that shifted to, from two, between $200,000 and $300,000, and it just shows that shift in the median price point. It shows that big increase in what properties are transacting for, and therefore what we value them at. This slide contains the sales that we track and are using for our valuation. The county median of the sales that we use to value properties was to $215,000. That's countywide. We also break it up by what are called our models. Model 14 is here in Edwardsville. The median sales price for 2023 sales was $295,000, up from $269,000 the prior year. And these model boundaries are important, so we always start with the subject we're looking at. When we go to select comparable sales, we're going to try and find sales within the subdivision that are good comparable sales, after the neighborhood, which are smaller geographic boundaries within the models, neighborhood groups, which are similar neighborhoods within a model, and then finally after the model. Any analysis we do, whether it's setting land values, setting market modeling, only sales from in those models are going to be used to establish values on properties in those models. We're never going to depart outside of that. So a sale that happens in KUMED has no effect on a value for a property here in Edwardsville on Model 14. We keep those separate because one of the bases of appraisal, whether it's fee appraisal or mass appraisal, is the idea that you want to compare properties that are affected by similar economic conditions, and that's how we account for that. Almost done. If anybody's taking a nap, be a good time to wake up because, well, all this fun is about over. So looking at single-family residences, the median value for a single-family residence increased by $21,150 to $280,000. Again, that's a median measure, half will increase by more than that, half will increase by less. Making the assumption that middle level stays the same for all of those different taxing jurisdictions, if nothing changes, that's going to equate to an approximately $400 increase in taxes to the median single-family residents. Again, some will be more, some will be less. Looking overall, as of the date that we sent notices, Edwardsville, the boundaries that make up Edwardsville, the properties contained therein, saw a 19% increase in real estate assessment. You'll notice that the residential, if you do the math, it's about eight or nine percent. All that growth in assessment, real estate assessment, came on a haul of, a sizable portion of it, came from increases in commercial real estate values. Specifically, some of the big warehouses in the industrial part, they're running low as far as when they do sell, we're missing a mark, we made the adjustment for it. Industrial is still a real high property type, so big increases there. This doesn't include utility or personal property values, that is, all real estate across all classes. I will say that that number, that 19%, it is subject to change, up until we certify, and then that's the numbers that the taxing jurisdictions will work off is that certified value. We're still working appeals, and that can have an impact on that percentage increase in total assessed value to get certified. Even after that, because of the way the Florida tax appeals schedules, we'll still have appeals go on. I mean, we've still got, for 2021, appeals law, smart, property, certified number is the one that's useful for the taxing jurisdictions, the tax area concepts. Edwardsville is kind of unique in Wyandotte County, and really in the metro, in the way that tax burden breaks down. 64% of your assessed value, commercial properties, about 36%, 30%, residential, you've got some farmsteads, which could be classed as residential, it's the same assessment grade, that is, rural properties, rural homes, agricultural, land, you go to the agricultural land, and some, that one, that's classified as base. So that's a breakdown. Again, in a lot of other cities, in Wyandotte County, you almost flip it, it's more of 640 with residents, here in, and that's all that got us started, the presentation, something I should add, slide here, about, is the idea that there are two parts to tax, well, well, that means we talked about, if that don't add. The appraisal that we do, those assessed values, that really is just a, it's a fine enough pie that nobody wants to piece up. It's figuring out everybody's proportional share of the tax burden and taxing jurisdiction. The other part of that equation is the middle level, which is the tax rate, which is determined by all the different taxing jurisdictions. And I should have had the slide, and everybody wanted to point that out because I think it's important. With that said, that's all I had prepared. Happy to answer questions. Everybody may do it.
I have one question. Well, I might have a couple of questions. One I'll ask you first. Is, is there any, and this may be a state-level question, but is there any plan of having the ability to pay for trailer tags online instead of having to go in every year?
That is definitely going to be a state-level question. My thought is, I don't think it's at the top of the list. Looking at personal property, there was a move this year in legislature, and I actually left my legislative slide out of this deck, I don't talk about that, is more towards exempting more personal property. I would say before you go online, honestly, it will just be exempted for the property tax portion. And if you do that, it makes it easier to set it up where you can't go online because it's just a single entity.
Okay. Yeah. Well, I'll ask another one. We have crickets up here. There are a couple of properties in Edwardsville that are commercial properties that residents would assume have a lot of value, and we are collecting almost nothing on those. Could you explain why a commercial property that is developed and ready to go with, with commercial sites would have a very low assessed value that they're being taxed on?
Low, low, like tens of thousands or thousands? Okay. Without known, so I can almost guarantee that that is agricultural use. We've got, I'll talk about one that's currently on my, because I'm going to court appeals on it. There are people that will go and say, I'm going to put some hay on your ground, and I'm also going to represent you at the Board of Tax Appeals and get you agricultural use. It's sort of just throw up a bed and see, make some small bales. To me, that's not an agricultural activity, especially on a developed commercial site. We've got one, not in Edwardsville, but a little more up here, with a gentleman went and put some seed down, within a active shopping center. Went to the Board of Tax Appeals and said, oh, yeah, for farming, the Board of Tax Appeals says, oh, sounds good, here's your agricultural use. That was millions of dollars of value that went away. We disagree with that. So we go to the Court of Appeals and see about getting that statute adjusted to account for the fact that there's, there's farming, and then there's throwing some hay seed down to pay those taxes. So likely, and if it's a site that I think it is, here in Edwardsville, same dispute, same situation, somebody came in, spreads an AC and bales the weeds in the trash once a year. And according to the Court of Tax Appeals, that satisfies the statute for agricultural use.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, we just get some miller grouchy, if you can't tell.
Well, I'm all for, if you don't have to pay the government, I'm, I'm, I think that's great, but I feel like there's some, maybe taking advantage of situations that, that is going on. And so that was a concern of mine, was just kind of clarifying that because I couldn't answer it. You know, I'm going off. I don't really know why that would be valued so low. So, so I understand that, but.
Again, I think I need to know what site it is, it's a very similar situation. I'm hoping Court of Appeals gives us some clarity on that, and it is something that we're, we're buzzing about.
Wonderful. Does anyone have any?
I do.
Okay.
I don't know exactly how to ask it, but what we do here occasionally is we'll take a cure of a dollar bill, and we'll slice it up and say, this goes here, this goes here, this goes here. Can the county do that with a $100 bill specifically for Edwardsville residents so they can see where their money's going? And how much of it are we getting, you know, how much of that is actually for us or if that's for county? I know if it goes junior college and so forth, but I think it would be good for me to know that, and I think it'd be really good for the residents to know that.
So we've actually got that on our, do you have internet access?
I didn't see it in here.
Wait, it's not in this slide deck. If you go to our website, michaelkazik.org/.
Could you simplify the website a little bit? Because it's not easy to navigate.
I, I can do what I can do as far as that goes. Once you get on our appraiser portion of the site, there's a 2024 public market update. It's a PowerPoint similar to this one. It's the public facing presentation we've given, and I think the dollar bills that you're talking about, they're on the last five or six. that you're talking about, they're on the last five or six pages of that. So they're there. And I can track down the one for Edwardsville and get it sent.
I would love to see that, and I would like to have that sent to the city manager for distribution to us, to distribute it to our residents. Because the questions that we get up here when we're getting ready to go through this budget, and it's going to be another, probably another dogfight like it has been. And I think our public needs to understand what we're up against when we're trying to set a budget for our town, when we're supplying an awful lot of money for the county, that we're not really seeing a lot back. And I might be naive on this, and I might be barking at the wrong tree, but it would make it a lot better for me to be able to understand that. I've probably got some agreement up here. I got a feeling on that. But if you could please do that.
No, I can, I can absolutely send it. I mean, again, if just wickelcaseyk.org slash appraiser, our portion of that site, I feel like it's pretty well arranged, and there is a ton of information there available. Just that, that slide deck, that public PowerPoint, it's 50 pages and kind of biased, but I think all of them are pretty useful, especially these conversations surrounding taxes and valuation. And I can send that as well.
Yeah, I would, I would like, appreciate that, if it would be possible. That's a good question. Because I think that we need more relevance to us versus Piper, Kansas City, Kansas, Turner. We need relevance for us on that.
Well, I think that, you know, I would make that idea.
I write a check just like everybody else. And I, I write that check and I say, my house is not worth this much money. And I have a hard time paying taxes on something that I don't value as high as the county value, so.
Have you, have you done an appeal with this before?
I have, I have family that have. I never have because they weren't very successful with it.
Well, again, that's a, not to keep up with the website, something that's new there this year is an information pack about how to appeal, as well as kind of a worksheet to go through to get ready for it.
And you're still working on 2020, 2021 appeals?
Well, at the state, at the state level. Again, and those are all large properties. Legends is an example. Because they're so complex and the, the attorney for legends, for whatever reason prefers to stack them up, that's the outlier, right? Any informal appeals to get filed this year, again, March 1st, you'll be notified of them. They'll be processed by my main client. And then the protests, depending on the timing, it could take a month or two, but we'll process them as quickly as we can. Again, it, it's funny to hear that people don't necessarily believe it. We want people to come in and appeal if they feel like that value's incorrect. Because our goal at the county appraiser's office is to set a fair market value on every piece of property in the county. The problem, of course, becomes when an appraisal is defined as an opinion of value. Opinions differ, but I'm always going to encourage anybody that feels like that's not correct to appeal. If they feel like it is incorrect after visiting with our staff, inform them to go on and do the small claims and do the photo. That's what it's there for, because we don't always get it right. And I think there's an importance of having a third party weigh in sometimes. Again, I, I'll do, that's my piece on that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can you explain to us, because I have, I've got almost about 20 acres, and my entire acreage is zoned ag, but I'm taxed at R1.
Sure.
Now, Mike, hold on. I can't plant crops. I can't graze cattle because it's all woods. You know, I don't harvest any lumber off of it or anything like that. So it's basically, it's a great deer hunt, but other than that, it's not worth anything.
Okay. So let's talk about that statute of that. What it requires is an agricultural use. And so if that's not there, can't grant ag. What I hope has occurred is we recognize that there's a home site there, and it's going to carry a certain amount of value in it. And then that access is going to be valued at a lower market rate. And again, that's something that can be discussed and looked at as part of that valuation process. And then as far as the ag use, again, it's a contentious issue. I will say that there are people that have those wooded tracts and lots, and it's a lot to get it established, managing it as tree production. But that's the one, that's clearing all the invasive or undesirable species. That's planting new ones. That's a big process. It can happen. But again, you've got to actually be partaking of that agricultural use to get that ag use appraisal classification. And that's a common question we get when it comes to that, because you can be zoned ag, but if that use isn't in place, per the way the ag use statutes are, can't grant it, won't grant it. Zoning and use for property tax purposes are two separate tracks. Is that?
It's what I hear every year.
Okay.
You hear the same thing every year. And you talked about other improvements to your home. Well, right now, you know, we got clobbered with a hailstorm and approximately 900 homes needing new roofs. Are these people going to be assessed for having a new roof put on their house?
Nope. I say no. Typically, what we consider a roof, it's a wear item. And we anticipate that every 20, 25, however many years, it's going to be replaced. And that's just maintenance. We're never going to increase the value even more maintenance. That's paint. If you're just painting the house, if you're just putting new windows on a house, new roof, and it was okay before, we're not going to increase the value. Now, where a roof can increase value and should increase value, let's say you've got a house, the roof has failed on, and we recognize that. We say, this, this house is in poor conditions, valued at as such. If you fix that, that's going to increase the value. But if it's been just average, average, normal maintenance, and it's part of that, we're not going to make an adjustment to condition. And that's where that would come in. So if it's average before, new roof doesn't make anything better than that.
I'm done.
I guess I've got something real quick. Bonner Springs, Edwardsville, and Kansas City, Kansas, all part of the unified government. Why are houses in Kansas City, Kansas, other than Piper, taxed at a fraction of what Edwardsville, Bonner, and Piper are?
Sure. So the tax rate is going to be the same. The difference is in valuation. And we'll talk about at the beginning of this slide deck, the idea that it's based on market participants and their decisions in the marketplace. Typically, people are paying more for properties in Edwardsville compared to what they're paying for properties, let's just say downtown central. So it is a function of the value. And when I talk about equitable distribution, that is something that, that we look at. Because to do our job appropriately, what we want to have is that 90% of market value that we're appraising at, we want that to be as close to countywide as it can. And it is. There's no model or part of the county that's getting a break when compared to that market value standard. And I mean, that's the direct answer, though, is it's just higher value, higher taxes is what's causing that.
So, and I'm just going to throw this out there. There's a house at Seventh and Prundero, housing addition, that's appraised higher than my residence, and they're taxed at a third of what I am.
I would be interested to look at that, if you got the address, because that.
I don't want to throw it out right now.
No, and that's fine. But I would be interested in investigating that, because if the value is about the same, the taxes ought to be about the same. Because milli's, they're a little higher or lower depending on where you're at in the county, but not that much higher or lower that would make that kind of difference. It's possible that there's, and sometimes it were applied to that property, but I'd have to look, and I can't get you an answer.
And just one more quick question.
Sure.
Homestead. Can you kind of explain that to me?
Sure. Homestead. So there's actually three programs associated with Homestead. There's the Homestead. What that does is rebates to the taxpayers a portion of their property tax bill in any given year, assuming they meet the income restrictions, which is fairly low, around $40,000 a year. You can get some of that back. There was a new one going back three years. I call it the Golden Years Tax Rebate because that's how it was introduced in the legislature. It's got a name. I don't know what it is. Basically, what it was is, is a freeze. The year you turn 65 is a base year. Taxes will be frozen, assuming, again, you meet income qualifications, which are higher than they are for Homestead. That base year, taxes are capped and rebated anything over that cap back to you through your Kansas State Income Tax Return. It's a fully refundable tax credit, so it truly does cap it for folks that qualify. And there's one that's called Save Senior. I think the income limit is in the twenties, $20,000. It functions similar to Homestead where it's a rebate on property taxes and sales taxes. So there's three programs that all kind of go together. They're actually in the same packet when you apply your Kansas income taxes. That, that save, or the Golden Years, the new cap basically for seniors, I think that that's probably the most beneficial program for a lot of people. It's, again, going to depend on your specific situation. But it's out there. It's available. There is legislation that's currently live to increase the income cap for that program, as well as the assessment or appraisal value cap. It got bundled with really bad pieces of legislation, I think, as the kicker to try and get it passed. It hasn't passed the House yet. I think the veto session is going to be busy. I don't know that it happens this year. I think if that was a clean bill, it would have already passed. I think it would have been a very good thing. Because there are some people that could benefit from that Golden Years Tax Rebate that don't just because they didn't cut that. Also, the legislature this year promised that, while you, that's a, there is a bill that's going to pass that'll require personal property filings to be one time only. If you get a new trailer, you render it to us once, and then you got all those new ones gone. But that annual rendition is likely to go away. There's also a bill, not a bill, a second current resolution, which would have been a constitutional amendment that would have kept about assessed valuation increases at 4% for all property types. It passed out of the Senate. It did not get a hearing in the House. So it won't go anywhere this year. It's going to be reproduced next year. That would definitely solve for the big spikes. But again, it also gets away from market value, which Kansas, the way that this system is set up is kind of a goal. But that's out there. Those are really the big ones. So I think they're coming back next week for veto session and wrap up. So keep an eye. There might be, there's always all kinds of stuff comes out of that, specifically property taxes.
Another range.
Yeah, another range.
One last question, and not to keep you too long, but can you talk just briefly about how you value land? I had a couple of residents who have a homestead on land with acreage, but their valuations on their land went up substantially this year. When they called and asked about it, it seemed like they were charging them as if you were buying an acre of five lots and going to build a new house on it instead of land that already has a home on it, so obviously couldn't build on it.
Sure. And so the way that that works is, it's just like a sales, not just like a sales. We look for lots of properties that have sold. And then we build a model for those models that we talked about based on that. So, you know, let's say we've got 20 acre tract, and we do call to kind of verify, because we know if somebody wants to put a subdivision in, it's possible they're going to pay more for that 20 acres than they went. They're just wanting to have a home site. We try to weed those out. And then we build a, it's called a computer assisted land pricing table, which is a land law. We know that first acre or so, two acres, that home site, that's got either surface to connections, utility connections, that's the most valuable piece. And then it should drop off the bigger the parcel gets. Again, if there's a specific concern from the taxpayer, I'd be happy to look at it, sit down with them, and, and go over it. But that's, that's how it should work. And again, declining returns, the bigger a piece gets, the less per acre it should be valued at.
Thank you. Yeah.
Do you have a contact number?
I do. I didn't bring any cards. On the slide deck, that's right there, last line. Donald three, 573-8403 is my direct line.
Perfect.
And as far as specific questions or that address, if you just get to the city manager, I bet he'd be happy to email it to me. I can answer to you that one. Anybody else? Fantastic. I appreciate your honest time.
Great job.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody else in LA. You guys have a great rest of the meeting, okay?
We appreciate you coming out. Thank you so much. And I, I think I touched on this last year when Mr. Willard was in, but a lot of times our county appraiser gets a little bit of a bad rap. Tax bills come in the mail, and they go, oh, that appraiser, he's, he's got me again. The truth of the matter is, I've, I've been in the real estate business for a long time, and, and I can sell your house for probably what he's got on that, on that bill. His job is just to determine what the market value is. The tax bill is set by the people up here, the people at the UG, the people in the school district, the people at the community college, and the people at the state level. So the appraiser does not set the tax bill. He sets the value, and then, then we determine what we're going to do with that. And so I appreciate you coming out. I know you're giving up your evenings, and so we appreciate you here to answer questions. And even as it goes to appeal, explaining how that process works so people can walk through those steps and, and get some help there.
Absolutely. I appreciate that question about this.
Thank you. Thank you. Item four on the agenda, Consider a Bid Award for the 2024 Kansas Avenue Repair and Place Street Improvement Project.
Mayor, thank you. Mayor, Council, what you have before you is the background information on item number four, which is staff's recommendation that we award the bid for the Kansas Avenue Street Improvement Project to McConnell and Associates and to authorize the city manager to enter into contract for their services. The background is that council identified this as a priority road project last year. And we've moved forward with temporary nope financing for this particular project and others as well. So there's adequate funding for this. We requested that sealed bids be submitted to the city, and we opened those on April 16th, 2024. And the lowest and best bid was from McConnell and Associates, $219,618. And therefore, with very simple narrative summary, they, we spoke to them. We reviewed all their material, and it's our job to assess all of that, to make sure that just because it's low doesn't always mean it's best. But in this case, they will deliver the services that we require in the bid package and for that amount that's stated. So therefore, we recommend that you accept and award that bid, and then you authorize me to enter into the contract.
Mr. Mathies?
Sir.
Is it true we don't have to take the lowest bid, though, Treck? Correct?
That's correct.
Good. I would like to make a motion that we accept Mack and Nanny Construction, and I'll tell you why. They, it's about $31,000. They've done more work for free than $31,000 in our city. Haven't they helped us with potholes, different, different things going on? And they're right here already, and they do a good job for us. Plus, they have property here in town.
Have they done work for free in our city?
I would say in this particular, what I know specifically, is that we asked Ben Mack and Nanny to come out to this street project to give us an idea of what it might entail and what the cost might be. And he did that gratis, if you will. That's, that's what I know specifically for free.
So just giving an estimate?
Yes.
Oh.
Have all of these bids come in what was projected beforehand? Did these bids come in a lot lower than what we were expecting?
Yeah, if you look at that prime time contracting corporation, that's more in line with what we call the engineer's estimates. And it was about in that ballpark. So all of these are lower, yes.
Have we used McConnell and Associates before?
I believe we have. I couldn't tell you what's exact project, and it's been a little bit of time.
It was O'Donnell and Associates.
O'Donnell.
But they did Edwardsville Drive.
Okay.
I'd like to second the motion for Mack and Nanny.
I'd like to just take a quick second before we go to vote. I, just ethically, I don't quite understand. I, just ethically, I don't quite understand why we would spend an extra thirty thousand dollars because we're friends with the contractor. They've worked here before. Our city has a lot of projects and a lot of things we want to do. And I so want to get this project done. This street's really important to me and residents here. But we can do a lot with thirty thousand dollars. I mean, there is a lot that needs done. And so we can have some conversation on it if you want to, or we can go to vote. But I, if somebody's giving us a bid for over thirty thousand dollars less, I just don't understand how we would not use that money better for residents. If anyone else has a comment or we can go to vote because we have a second. Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Bishop, a second from Councilman Mollot. I'll go to the court, please, call roll.
Pat Cox.
No.
Mullen.
No.
Bishop.
Yes.
Mollot.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Should we have another motion?
Motion, we use McConnell and Associates.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Mullen, a second from Councilman Schreiber. Love court, please call roll.
Pat Cox.
Yes.
Mullen.
Yes.
Bishop.
No.
Mollot.
No.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item number five, city manager report. Do you have anything for us this evening?
The one thing that came in today was our communication with the city managers or the city administrators office of the UG about ARPA funds that's being presented to us. It's the county portion. We, we talked about it in the, in the amount of about one point three million dollars that the UG Commission took action on. We've been working that process and the mayor knows full well, it's been a long process. But we've made some progress. They requested a letter from us some weeks ago. I presented that letter requesting that those funds be distributed to us. However, we need to clarify and be very specific on how we would like to spend the money. In, in the sense that they're going to grant it to us. However, the generalities in which I presented the letter was not specific enough. Therefore, the staff would need some guidance on specifically how that we would like to proceed in spending that money so they have the detail necessary. And more than likely, it's, it's about the reporting of how they're distributing and spending those funds themselves. That's, that's what I received today.
Is there a list of what we can spend them on and a list not?
I've asked for that before and never have a response. Need an instruction manual with it.
Well, I think, I think there was in lots of discussions, and I, I think it's been very public, is that we are pursuing some opportunities with our, our, our building, our facilities to add some sort of a library resource center, computer lab, that sort of thing. And we were hoping that this money then could be attributed to that project to offset some of those costs related to that specific project.
Was this, was this the, it couldn't go towards salaries. It had to be tangible either.
Can't go.
Right, right. It, it had to be items and so, I just distinctly remember, it couldn't be salaries. It had to be allocated to.
We have, we kind of have a mix of funds, if you will. We have our own ARPA funds, which were for lost revenue. It's a reimbursement for lost revenue. Therefore, we could somewhat apply that as we wanted to. We could, we could put it in our reserve fund. We could, we could give raises. We could do those kinds of things with that. We chose on our path, which I think is a very good tangible thing, I love that word, that about sidewalks. Some of these things that the community can really see, feel, touch, that's where.
Right.
So and when we're talking about the ARPA funds from the county, we submitted eight or nine projects and most of them were rejected, denied. And those involved a number of different things. Venting for the police department, I think, was one of them. It's a machine that dug ditches. That was one of them they said we could have. But when we talked about continuation of trails and sidewalks and things, those kinds of things were denied. So there was a regrouping and the mayor spearheaded that conversation to have the administrator's office take a, a new look at, at the ARPA funds, where they stood, how much was remaining. And that Bonner Springs and Edwardsville really didn't get our share. They said we could have some, but there was a lot of obstacles in the way. So in that kind of new conversation, this has become a grant from the UG to us with their, what I believe to be surplus ARPA funds, remaining funds that they have. And then it's in the tune of about one point three million dollars. Now, the use of that is, it's, as I understood, this classification was similar to this lost revenue due to the COVID, right? That pandemic. And that, you know, we could use it for those identified sources. And I think that's really what is key here, is they're asking us to identify exactly what we're going to do with the money. Rather than, I, I wrote in some generalities that we will, we will use it as, as intended, the rules of ARPA. And, you know, they, they have asked again to be more specific. And so I don't know exactly what it is that we want to do, but I knew that the lead project and the lead idea, and I don't think that's a terrible idea, that in a sense, if you put one point three million to the project, therefore, you don't have to go borrow one point three million dollars, right? It lessens that. There may be other ways. We have to be creative, as we previously discussed. The complexities there is that that's a bonded project and ARPA is somewhat, they're leery of that kind of thing. So it may be that we have to invest that in other places we would have spent the money, right? And save that bonding for, for this particular project. So there are, there are a number of things to consider. So that's, that's.
I have a lot more insight on that and I can share it with you tonight or later if you want to. I didn't know that this was coming up tonight, but I had a meeting with the mayor's office a couple of days ago and have some more direction from that. The reason that the city doesn't have a whole lot of information on it is because this is the one point three million that I stood in front of the UG and fought for for an hour and a half alongside Mayor Harrington over a year ago. And then I have been sitting through meeting after meeting and web Zoom calls with ARPA committees and everyone else to try to not get this money taken from us. It went from one point three million to one million because money just disappeared. I had to fight for that to come back. And so it has been a long, rigorous road to get this money for our city, which we should have been at the table from the very beginning to get. So one, one thing that I have been really advocating for from the beginning was to get a computer lab library for our city, included in our municipal buildings. Just this week, the counselor from Bonner High School reached out to me and, and we had met at a, a different event. And he said, I just wanted to let you know, it came up. We had a student who lives in New York community and he does not have the resources he needs to get the after-school help and tutoring because he has no access to computers, no access to wifi at his house. And so if you can get this computer lab in, the sooner the better because you have students that live in your community that could use it today. And so I would, I've, I've been fighting for this the entire time for a year. I've put a lot of heart and soul and just hours and hours into that. And so I hopefully have the city's support in continuing on that to serve our community. Not only to bring a resource back into our community, into the heart of our city that would be walkable and accessible to those most in need in our area. That would help people for workforce development, for submitting resumes, for finding jobs and filling out applications. But for students who can't have three or four of them at the same time, getting internet access at their homes to do their homework and to get tutoring for kids to come, come get books and just get things that other, other kids get in their communities and in their neighborhoods that we're lacking in Edwardsville. It's a great opportunity for that. I didn't quite prepare to go to bat for this tonight, but, but if, if I need to, that's, that's what I'll continue to do for, for our kids and for our residents. The other part of that is this is going into a project that our, our council has been supportive of. And that's new municipal buildings that serve our residents here in Edwardsville. This lowers the tax burden for the residents by substantial amount and brings something into our community buildings that'll serve them directly. And so I would like to stay the course on that and continue along. The information I got from the mayor's meeting is it doesn't have to be ARPA guideline per se. They just need to know that it's not going into our general fund. We need it earmarked and we need to spend it within the timeline. So.
That's the way I understood it. I'll stay that course, Mayor, and I think that's, when they talk about ARPA, they talk about underserved populations. And this is certainly something we identified a long time ago, over a year ago, that we would like to target this. And I think this has some certain, some great value. So I'll stay the course.
Anything else that you had for us tonight?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Council comments? Councilman Mullen, do you have anything for us tonight?
No, ma'am.
Councilman Bishop?
Yes. I was in Manhattan last weekend for a, some training from the league. But I was talking to some of the Manhattan firemen. I guess we were deployed out west for some grass fires. Tim, Chief Witten was out that way.
Yeah.
Riley County.
Yeah, Riley County.
Yeah. Well, they just had nothing but praise for us.
Oh, good. Yeah.
Because they said, how can a little community like you come out and support us? And I think it's a great thing because it's, we get paid for it too. And so now it's, it's getting to be such a big deal. The bigger cities are starting to look into it. I know KCK is, they're looking into joining in to, you know, you know, help bringing a little extra revenue. So I think that if, from everything I've heard, it, it was a great deal for us to be out there and I fully support that. And then Mr. Nay, have we got an opinion from the attorney general yet on vetoing appropriations ordinances?
No, I have a draft. I can circulate that and approve it with the council. Happy to send it to everyone.
You were supposed to, we were supposed to do this last summer, remember?
In the fall.
Fall, yes. But we're, we're just about in the budget season again.
I'm happy to, to either circulate that or send it. I have the draft.
So where do we stand coming up on this ordinance that, the twelve dash three zero zero three?
Exactly. Regardless of the opinion, it would provide guidance, obviously, but we stand in the same place. Whether you want to consider ordinances that would, under your home rule, power, would be the other option is for the council to decide for itself under that. Since I think the state statutes, because the current ordinance says that the veto power is subject to state statute and that was the whole conflict. Last session, or last year was KSA twelve dash three zero zero three appears to only apply to council forums of government and not, which, and that statute clearly prohibits veto for appropriation ordinances. So that would be the first thing. But even with an attorney general's opinion, it would provide statewide guidance. It's discretionary, but that would not stop the ability of a person with standing from challenging it because it wouldn't be binding.
You mentioned home rule, but I've been through a class on home rule. It's a pretty difficult thing to get done.
Yeah, and I, I mean, the current ordinance, I don't recall how the current ordinance, as far as mayoral powers, was passed, whether that was chartered or it was an ordinary ordinance. That would be.
It's a charter ordinance.
So it'd be a charter ordinance. So it's difficult, but it still is something that I think as council can deliberate among yourselves to determine what structure or form of government you would, not form of government, but structure as far as how the ordinances would play into that. As I've indicated in the, in the draft, I do think it's a matter of statewide importance, given the conflicts in the statutes. And so hopefully that that, that provides that with the attorney general with enough reason to discretionarily provide guidance. Because there is an opinion on KSA twelve dash three zero zero three from nineteen eighty-two that I previously circulated to the council that again reinforces the, that statute prohibiting mayoral vetoes of appropriation ordinances. The whole question has to do with whether the form of government then would change that.
Okay. Mr. May, I will tell you this, that I know they're doing clearing in the power lines because it just came down my street and I was talking to them. So they're doing an assessment. So, but I've seen Asplin. They're everywhere. Yeah. Yeah, they're coming. They'll make it there. Yeah, that's it. I'm done.
Councilman Mollot?
You've been mentioning facilities. Where do we stand on that group that's working on facilities? Where do we stand on that? And I wasn't aware that you were trying to get ARPA funds to go into a library there or so. There's a lot of information that comes out in these meetings that I don't have any information on previously. So where did that come from?
Well, the only thing I would suggest is the last meeting that the architect was here, that was, that was actually addressed. It was a piece of the, a piece of the building.
I can miss things pretty easily.
No, yeah, exactly. So yeah, just for clarification, that, that has been mentioned a couple of times in the design. As, as far as where we stand, their, their meeting is upcoming to review the, just somewhat the design they talked about, just to get an idea. And so the next piece from that, what you saw, kind of the overview, the next piece of that is more than likely the money application. In other words, we're going to, we're going to say, well, if you build this particular one, this is how much we expect that to cost. So that's really what the upcoming pieces are.
Okay. Do we have council representation on that, on that committee? That's working with that company?
So far, the mayor and I have been invited to that review piece. As far as anybody being on the committee, that's up to them.
Well, I was on for a while. I don't know if I still am though.
At one point, a lot of us were on it. Now we're not. I, on budget coming up, we talked a little bit at that sign thing the other day. We need Wood End Road and Ninety-Eighth Street, south of the railroad tracks. They need some work or we're going to lose them. Ninth Street from the railroad tracks down to Wood End Road is, needs to be widened and it's, it's getting in pretty bad shape. And also Wood End Road all the way from Ninth Street clear to four thirty-five is horrible. We're going to lose that road if we don't do something to it pretty quick. And I don't think that's going to be in the budget that we want to fool with right now. So we need to get some kind of money directed that direction, I think. I'm glad to see that Kansas Avenue is going to get done. If we can get down to Ritzland and one hundred and Fourth Street and all that, that's going to be great too. The public needs to know that we have been working on these roads pretty well for the last four or five years. And, you know, there's a lot of negative things that come out on Facebook and Hundred and Tenth, Hundred and Second and all that. A lot of negative stuff on there, but there is a lot of positive stuff that has been done. So, you know, I think our public needs to realize that. Which is kind of why I pointed out to the county guy, you know, maybe we need to know a little bit more about where our dollar does go in the county, you know, versus what they're taking from us and we're not getting it. That's, that's where I'm coming from on those silly questions. I think also on the, I have seen power lines that are low. As a matter of fact, I reported some several times up on North Hundred and Second Street, south of River View, that that one's still hanging down. I would like to see something done about that.
Yeah, I can comment on that, if you will, that they have been in contact with the right people. It's, it's their stuff, right? The city can't touch it, right? There's nothing more we can do. Just tell them about it.
About the time somebody gets hung on that or a car runs off and runs underneath that, then there's going to be some issues. So I think that need to put some pressure on them for that. And that goes along with the codes, you know, with springtime coming. I think codes needs to really be upped quite a bit. And there are several places that I can point out to you on codes. I would like to see, maybe in the budget, is maybe looking at getting a contracted snow removal for next year. Somehow work, work a contract because I think that our people were unprepared last year and I don't think they did as good a job as could have been done. I know there's been some disorganization around here, but we should be able to get solidified on some of that where we can do a little better job on snow removal. I don't know what I can ask. I'm going to ask and you can tell me to shut up. But what is going on at Hundred and Tenth and River View on the property where the hotel was going to be? Is there anything that you can share with us on that?
Are you speaking of any litigation? That's something I can comment on. I know the city is not involved in any litigation, but we know publicly there's been those kinds of things. As far as, the last report I had to you was there seem to be discussions from developers with the bond, bondholders, if you will, that they're amenable to the right financial package that makes them whole because they invested on purpose, right? To, to, you know, so I think that's the last message we have, you know? We have, we have developers that, that through why not EDC, they look at that all the time and then they find that, as we know, that's a burden proper. So the answer is. So the answer is there's nothing new. And as far as litigation, I don't have any comment on it, but I'm not involved.
Well, I just want to throw that out there because that's, you know, that was going to be such a big thing for Edwardsville and then it just went to hell. And, you know, it's disappointing as can be. And then right across the road, they're talking about putting in a theme park in Bonner Springs. You know, it seems like we miss out on any kind of good money generating developments around here. And it's just very disappointing to see everything around you getting built and we're still sitting on the same little spot down there, you know, so. I hope most of the town agrees with me on that. So that was the question I had. I think that's all for now. Thank you.
Councilman Schreiber?
I'd like to thank, and if you could thank Mark Willard for coming again and explaining the process, explaining what the office does. I think, you know, a lot of, a lot of questions, even Councilmember Bishop's question about his land, his property. I think you just need to plant some hay. But I, I think it, it does make a lot of sense. Do we like it? No, I mean, but he's not responsible for the taxes, as Mayor Kay Hart explained. So, but it's very helpful, his presentation, very helpful. I'm going to task you with something. You may remember this. So I brought this up a couple of years ago about Edwardsville. What we pay in taxes, library taxes. Do you remember this?
Somewhat, yes.
Do we pay unified government library tax?
It's, it's very possible, but we're.
And Bonner Springs?
We're in the PET, right? It's the Piper Edwardsville Turner Library District. And that's, is our taxing authority. We volunteered into that 2003.
But I think we pay Bonner every year too.
Well, we, we may have some sort of agreement there, but, and the mayor is somewhat the expert in this. I'll yield it there. But I know we're in the PET for sure. And how they tax each, that, that, you know, again, it's not even, as far as Bonner, we share in some of those resources, I believe.
I don't know why, but anyway. Could you look into that, please?
Sure can.
This was brought up, like I said, a couple of years ago. It was looked into, looked into, even gone back to so far and why it's this way. And it was getting unraveled, so.
Well, I, I will yield to the mayor because that's part of this, the whole discussion about funds and that project, which we think is so valuable. Because the accessibility, right, that walkability coming in, there's no place to walk to right now, right? So Piper Edwardsville Turner, well, where's that located, right? That's a long ways away. And so then by default, we go where? Closest to us, Bonner Springs. I mean, that would make sense.
Right.
But, but we want our relationship with the library piece, the resource piece to be right here in town and just think it's something that we invested. If you think about it, it's very similar to the concept of our ambulance service. Even though we had a good service, it was so far away. It wasn't our service, right? And so we brought that here so you can, you can see it, you can feel it, you can, you can hear it. You can thank the people that are helping. Same principle, I think, here. So as far as the research show, we can do it. And I'll yield to the mayor too. She probably has some insight because he's very.
Right, right. I just know, and even, I know during 2020 was brought, this is how far back. Senator Petty kind of gave a presentation. We were all online and it was, like I said, unraveled, wave, wave, wave. But don't, don't, why, don't know why, I believe we paid for two entities. I think we do.
So I won't take too much time on this because I could go on for a long time.
That's Mark's homework.
I've already got most of it. So we are part of the PET district and the PET district pays out. So they collect, oh gosh, years ago when Senator Petty gave us the, the.
Presentation.
Presentation. Thank you. My words were just not coming to me. Edwardsville alone was paying in over $425,000 a year toward libraries that are not even in our community for the ability to go check out books in the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries. Whereas if somebody from Johnson County came over and checked out a book from them, they would know I'm a dime. But we're paying in that for some reason, we're, we're in, in the system. That collection of money pays the Kansas City, Kansas Public Library system. And they give a portion of that to Bonner Springs. But what I could do is potentially have a presentation, an updated presentation to explain to us where our money is going and what's done with that in the near future.
Thank you. One last point too, on the award of bid, I, I do understand McInnany's done a lot of work here in Edwardsville. But I just, and this is no disrespect whatsoever, I just feel we have a ethical duty up here to watch our spending. This is my third term I've served up here and I do not remember ever awarding, not awarding the lowest bid just for that, that reason and that reason alone. So that's all I have.
Councilman McInnany?
Let's see. I wanted to take a moment while everyone's here and invite them on behalf of Sheriff, Sheriff Soptick to the 2024 Sheriff's Office Memorial Service. That's coming up May 10th at 11:00 a.m. And that's at the southwest corner of 7th Street and Anne. And so he wanted me to make sure to invite our staff and council. And so, and this is a public event, so public's welcome to attend. It's great just to honor and the memory of those that have served our community in, in the greatest way. So wanted to make sure to, to invite everyone to that. UG questions that had come up earlier from our resident and who's watching that budget. I am the squeaky wheel at the UG on a regular basis. I just met with the mayor and mayor pro tem, city manager for, or county administrator for just briefly last week and advocated again for removal of pilot from our BPU bills. That has been ignored for quite some time. Come to find out, and our, and our attorneys have been working on that. The UG staff sloughs it off without even relaying the information to their commissioners. And so hopefully we'll be able to bring that position, the commission again to please pay attention. When I brought it to their attention two years ago, when I first became mayor, they said, hey, we're right at the budget season. We're already counting on this money. Please give us some time to work on this. And I said, okay, well, that's, you know, I understand. And then last year it was, we just got a new county administrator right in the middle of all this. Please give us. And so it's just kick the can down the road again and again. And so that's something that I'm mad to be hitting for. If you go to the commission meetings and you listen to the residents plead with them year after year for hours to please not raise their taxes further as they're scared of losing their homes. It's basically been the same thing is, we are so sorry. We understand. We'll, we're, we're going to try to, we, we have to do this this year, but we'll, we'll do better next year. And so we'll see how that ends up this year. I know a lot of people are advocating for that at, at the UG level, but I'll be on them as well. And, and what you'll hear from them is, well, what services do you want to give up? And if you look around our community, you will see that there are very few services that serve Edwardsville from the county. The sheriff's department, the DA, the election office, the health department. There, there are a few statutorily required departments that are to serve our community. But we have those, some of those departments have grown exponentially larger than they ever were intended to be. And so I advocate for, go ahead, cut the services. I mean, we're not seeing them anyway. So it, you know, just, just downsize if we need to. Let's, let's have a smaller government so our people can stay in their homes. And so I'm committed to continuing on that. I encourage not only the, the governing body, but residents email, call, show up because they need to hear from you. Eventually we'll wear them down. So let's keep on it. And at that, just to thank everybody for, for a good meeting and have a great evening.
I have your autographs for you for review. Bring them with you next time, please. This is your homework for the next three weeks.